Okay.
Becky, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, it is 9:00 AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, which is posted at the entrance to this room for those who wish to preview that. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First item on our agenda is to open with prayer. Commissioner Wiems, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today to do the deliberation and business of this county, be mindful that we need your guidance and we seek it. We open our hearts to your divine wisdom to give us the right path as we make very monumental decisions for our constituents. Be with those who are less fortunate and give them comfort in their time of trial. Also be pleased, Lord, with our law enforcement and military, both here and abroad, as they protect our freedoms that we so enjoy. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Next item is to approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 30, 2023. Uh, was there...
I'll second for discussion.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We do have a correction of paragraph referencing Barry Mottson and Tim Benindal from the USDA, which should be Barry Johnson. That's the only thing that jumped in that I saw. For a correction, please.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with the correction concerning Barry Johnson's name being recorded. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Willard.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to consider the following. First, claims and treasurers receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurers receipts as presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question on the Pitney Bowes, that expense for postage. How long a period does that cover?
I keep that in the account so that it builds up that account. So at least keep $20,000 in there in the event like when we had the $20,000 postcards that went out. I didn't get notified that that was heading out ahead of time, just to make sure we have enough in there.
Okay.
So I can give you all the dates of when I submitted those.
No, no, that's fine.
But I submitted this one before the end of the book.
Sounds good. I assumed that was part of the... Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item is cancellation of the June 12, 2023 budgetary. This probably breaks your heart, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. We knew there was at least one budget that we were going to be over just due to a change in personnel. And there was something with the Visitors Bureau where we did that differently this year that Susan Maline thought she would have to maybe move some stuff around. So we'd have to open that because it was a different fund. But that kind of worked itself out, so she doesn't feel like we need to do that. So we can actually, we're still going to have to move money for at least that one office, but I can do that by resolution because we're going to be moving it within the general fund. It's just when you have to go from one fund to another fund that you have to open the budget up for the public.
I see, and that would be for the veterans.
Yes. Everybody else that we are watching, it looks like we're just gonna get by.
Very good. Good to hear.
And Visitors Bureau, the problem there was...
It was in the, you know, where we, they split off this year that it was done differently. So I think her and Susan and Lisa discussed it, and I think we're fine.
Sounds good.
Nice.
Do we need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we cancel the June 12, 2023 budget hearing as it is not needed anymore.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
Just a side note, the newspaper called me. This is to amend this year's current budget. This has nothing to do with next year's budget.
So noted. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Bruns.
Aye.
Willard.
Aye. Hugley.
Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Claims you were hiding are here last week.
Practicing here on the game I'd like to see this.
Not so much. This guy.
Just as I started out yesterday, or about Bertie. I don't even saw what I saw.
I was gonna say, that's not my game.
My wife got frustrated.
You or did you...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I wish I could throw it to her.
It's all directed at you.
Oh. Give me a clue how long it's been since this was... That's why he's... He's been fine.
Yeah, it's getting better than we expected.
Goodness gracious, it's tough. Did you say that probation is going to be done?
They may have started over the weekend. And so far, they are lined up to be in their opinion. They don't need the county employees to do it.
That's good of them. I figured they'd...
Making sure they got those right.
Marty and Brian have really stepped up.
Making sure they printed that right.
Well, right, I mean, I'm making sure.
Makes you proud of them.
It really does. They're a great team of people.
If we end this game...
They've had other agencies reach out to them because they need community service hours. And sometimes they have a hard time finding enough to do. And so the courts, the county courts have reached out. And then each officer, them and their families are going to paint their offices. So I mean...
I tell you what, that's wonderful.
It's gonna be, it's gonna reduce the cost exponentially on that. You know, it was $29,000 and change. So far, for paint and supplies, we've spent under $3,000. And we may have to do more, but...
Let's do it. What a bargain.
Pride and ownership.
And they got those TBA bathrooms. They stepped in, were just framed in when I was there. Has drywall been in there?
I haven't been over there since. They left the walls open for the plumbing inspection, which happened the day before I was over there the last time. An electrical inspection is supposed to be happening this week. Drywalls are supposed to be showing up after that.
It'll really make a change in that order.
Yeah. Yeah, we're moving along. And it is my goal to have no change orders.
And the fact that you found out the lease from Sue Hannah Cholroy.
I have... I want to stay on track.
To do a whole long storage for the county and have those closed doors. We'll have a couple of areas heated for light up machines or something. Some days we do that with our architect and expert.
Right, thank you. Yeah, that depends on whether or not at this time we have a full authority to discuss it. If I can make a little...
Oh.
Must be serious, Henry's coming in too.
That's more paperwork than I've ever seen you carry in here, Julie.
She's gonna carry that one out.
Probably not.
What? Yours went down? What? Oh, I said, I better be correct on that.
We can change that.
Those are good cause, just... Yeah.
I thought Penny might come down.
Well, if that once you got a little rain while we were gone over the weekend, huh?
Saturday afternoon, they had a downpour here.
Patrick texted us that at their house, they had like right around an inch.
It was flooding down when I came in for Greg Kaiser's celebration of life. Streets were flooded.
Wow.
Yes, it did.
That was a big front. We were watching it on the...
Always in there. Delmar didn't have anything yesterday when I talked to him, but they were absolutely amazed at the turnout. It was super, wasn't it? Absolutely super.
I like that the Cedar Room closed so all the employees could go. That was a wonderful gesture.
And BJ and Heckler were there, so much of the crew was there.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
Not surprised.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First item of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on May 30, 2023.
Chairman, regarding the Board of Equalization meeting, May 30, I would move to approve those minutes.
Motion and second and discussion. Roll call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hugley. Willard.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item, certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Good morning, Julie.
Henry.
Tell me what you have for us.
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. What we have this morning is kind of a accumulation, a little bit of everything here. We have a old Turk hearing cases that date clear back to 2014 and '15 that before the ruling was made by Turk, the people that were involved in the Turk hearing amongst themselves had a dispute as far as ownership. So they ended up in district court to, for the division of property between the two of them. And it involved a bunch of rental property and that drug on and on and on. And so before Turk could even make a decision as far as what to do with the properties, the courts had to decide ownership. That recently happened. So then Turk was able to finally rule on some 2014 and '15 cases, which we had, and Henry's more familiar with this, but we had done a confession of judgment or...
On eight of them.
On eight of them. So those are the ones in front of yours, the eight that we had previously came to a confession of judgment with the gentleman involved. We're hoping the rest of them, the paperwork has been signed and sent in by Mr. Mathewson to Turk to dismiss all the other properties that were involved in the Turk decisions as well. So hopefully Turk, you know, those cases will just be dropped. And Stephen has sent the paperwork that Brian has signed and everything.
Brian signed, and Brian's sending in his letter.
Sending, yeah, Brian will send in what he has to to Turk to hopefully get the rest of them dropped because there were, it involved a numerous number of properties since he had a bunch of rentals.
There were seven, yeah. There were seven that he dismissed.
Over for the two-year period, yeah.
There was eight that we had a confession of judgment on.
So what we have before us today, do we have the eight on the confession of judgments? Is that what we're looking at? Thank you.
Yep.
And these are for Mr. Brian L. Mathewson, Hotwood Canyon.
Yep.
Maxwell.
Yep.
And...
Is he able to, we talked to Becky, is he able to make one motion for all of those? And then the other ones that we have for the, like Homestead, can he make one motion for all those Homestead corrections too? Or how do they need to do that?
I, if possible, I'm gonna try it and we'll see what happens.
We've done group motions before.
They all retain the same title. So if I...
And that's all I was talking about.
Are they all separate?
They are. I mean, they could read each name in, I guess, individually. Like 20? Yeah, the department revenue this year, instead of sending them as they were doing their audit, they did not send anything out till the audit was completely done. So, you know, usually throughout the year, we bring in a couple at a time, two or three. But this time they waited till they were completely done. So I think there's close to 20. Eighteen, and then I think they sent another two a week or so later.
All real property?
All real property.
Okay, for Mr. Mathewson, there's one for $829.16. A second one for $39.10. Third one for $61.70. Fourth one for $230.72. Fifth one for $62.78. Did I say fifth one? I think I did. Sixth one is $51.22. Seventh one is $64.20. And the last one is for $11.34.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the confession of judgment. The, actually, I make a motion that we approve this certificate of correction and refund on those properties by Brian L. Matheson, where we had previously did a confession of judgment on. I believe those are the eight that you read.
Yes, sir. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Willard.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
I know it'll take you a little bit to sign those, Jerry, but I did just count the Homesteads, and I think there will be 18 of them. We got an email that two of those out of the 20 had appeals pending. So they did, I think, maybe find some more medical or something, so they're appealing those. So I believe in front of you today will just be 18 on the Homestead.
Okay, and bear with me just a second. I will give you the names on those. Okay, first one is for Deb Kristen Sun, Brady, Nebraska, state correcting the 2020 Homestead amount from 100% to zero. Thomas and Teresa Deckert in North Platt, Homestead amount amended from 100% to 60%. For Alial and Margene Flanders trustees here in North Platt, state corrected Homestead amount from 40% to zero. For Eugene and Jean Hardy, North Platt, the corrected amount was 100% down to zero. Janet Heinze, trustee here in North Platt, state corrected amount for 2020 from 40% to 90%. Next one is for Kathleen M. Hodson, trustee, North Platt, adjusted amount from 100% to zero. Sherri Keeling, Sullivan, hope I pronounced that correctly, Homestead exemption amount corrected from 100% to zero. Richard S. Murdoch, North Platt, Homestead amount adjusted from 100% to zero. Rocky and Patsy Nicholson, Hershey, Homestead exemption amount adjusted changed from 40% to 100%. Dwayne and Robert Olson, North Platt, Homestead exemption amount corrected from 100% to 80%. Wendell and Teresa Champlow, Champlow, am I pronouncing that correctly here, North Platt? Homestead exemption amount adjusted from 100% to 70%. Pete Torres, North Platt, Homestead exemption amount adjusted corrected from 100% to 70%. David and Virginia Vega, North Platt, Homestead exemption adjusted amount from 100% to 90%. Clara Weir, North Platt, Homestead exemption amount changed from 100% to zero. Catherine Winjit, North Platt, Homestead exemption amount for 2020, again, adjusted from 100% to 80%. Joan Cooper, North Platt, 2020 Homestead exemption amount adjusted from 100% to zero. Stanley Keith Maxwell, Homestead exemption amount adjusted from 90% to 20%. Last but not least, Albert Andrew, North Platt, Homestead exemption amount adjusted from 80% to 100%.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
Julie, are all of these Homestead exemptions that were returned from the Nebraska Department of Revenue based on additional information on either income or other monetary matters relating to each of the properties that we just read?
Yes, the department revenue, once the application is submitted to them from our office, they do an income audit.
So that answers my question.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate for me to make, I'm gonna try this. We'll see what happens. If you're ready for a motion.
I am, sir.
I would make a motion that we approve this check for correction and refund for the Homestead exemptions based on the information that we just had read before us on those particular applications from the Nebraska Department of Revenue. After review by the Lincoln County Assessor, went to Nebraska Department of Revenue, they reviewed additional information based on either income or other monetary decisions. And that would be my motion that we accept that.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Julie, does the Department of Revenue communicate with the residents while they're doing the audit? They're aware of these changes?
Yeah, they actually send the taxpayer a letter informing them 30 days prior before we even get the information. So that taxpayer does have 30 days to protest that. So as, you know, a couple of those were mentioned. I told them, I had them on the list here, but they are appealing them. So we don't have them in front of us today. But yeah, they do allow the taxpayer 30 days to appeal. Sometimes they can provide more medical expenses. Maybe they didn't provide any at the start because they thought their income was fine. But if they found, a lot of times it's an IRA or CD or something that they cashed in that they forgot and something that added extra income. So then if they provide medical expenses, then maybe instead of losing everything, they can still get a little bit back. So, but, so we don't get these until after that 30 days is over, so.
Very good.
For clarification, because there may be people watching that don't understand what this entails. State statute's quite clear on the qualifications as far as your income on whether or not you can qualify for this. Is that correct?
It is, yep. It's very clear on the income guidelines.
Income, age, other items.
Age, yeah, disability, all that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Willard.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
Henry.
No problem.
I'll be, it'll be a while, but I'll be with you shortly.
And, you know, I'm glad to see people appeal. If they think there was a misunderstanding or if they have additional evidence, that's, they're right and they should appeal.
Roll call, yeah?
Just gonna cut you a little slack today.
Well, I'm gonna lay a shot.
The pile wasn't nearly as big as I anticipated considering how small it was last week. Oh, it'll catch up to us sooner or later. You have writer's crap?
No. And I don't want it, so.
Hey, Brandon.
Hello.
All right.
Sherri, we have writer's crap. It's okay, I'll excuse myself a brief second. Look, silk around some cold glass. Merry Christmas. Okay, Julie, you might double-check me and make sure I got this all taken care of.
I can, I can do that.
Okay, next item on our agenda is Notice of Valuation Changes numbered 2023-001 to 2023-012, as submitted by the county assessor.
Okay, I have a little bit of explanation of these. We certify values to the Department of Revenue March 19th of every year, and once those values are certified, they cannot change for any reason whatsoever unless it comes before you for a certain reason. Taxpayers can protest in June, and then obviously you guys see those and approve them or disapprove them and make those changes on the protest forms. And then the only other way is through a county board change, and we can do those to you if there is a clerical error, if property was omitted. So say we found a new house that we were unaware of, you know, after that March 19 certification, it was an omitted property, and if it was overvalued or undervalued. Sometimes that means, like, maybe we had a field that was classified as irrigated, and we found out after that March 19th that it actually wasn't, it was actually dry land, or maybe they planted it back to grass, so that would be overvalued, so we correct that. So we normally save these until right around this June 1st, because once this county board change is made, the taxpayer does have 30 days to protest. So, you know, we try to get it so everybody's protesting during the month of June at the same time. So it makes it easier for the clerk, because they have to get stuff out so many days, you guys have so many days to, you know, make that decision and stuff, too. So we kind of try to do it all at the same time, so anybody that's protesting, I mean, we'll get a few stragglers that happen after June, that obviously can't wait, but anything that occurs after March 19th until June 1st, you know, we keep and bring them all to you at one time, so they're all protesting in June with all the rest of the taxpayers. So these would be a list of those, and I think it kind of states the item, yep, the reasoning, so.
Yeah, I see some are clerical errors, some are overvalued, some are undervalued. So there's quite a number of these. Do we take action on them separately?
I don't think we normally do any county board change, do they?
No, we usually, if it's okay, usually make a.
The number like you read, starting with this number.
Be a number if that's appropriate.
Yeah, the parcel numbers, we need to have those stated in the motion.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try it this way, okay? Let me see what we're on here. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the valuation of change numbers 2023-001 to 20-23012, as submitted by the Lincoln County Assessor. Each of those numbers represent a partial number, an owner, and a legal description along with the land values as listed on the document, so that would be my motion.
You meant, you meant assessor.
Like the county assessor.
County assessor, whatever. I said, I apologize. Thank you.
And they, this is all on real property, too.
It's all on real property.
I would, I would second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on these, that would be 13 properties, correct? Okay, we have a motion and, do we do a second?
I do.
And a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
We should sign both copies of this, correct?
Oh. I assume that there's two pages. Oh, I don't.
Both pages, I suppose. Oh, you, yeah, you do, yeah, there you go. There's two pages there.
Since we're kind of on the line of the protest, too, you guys probably did see in your packet that we, I stuck a copy of the reassessment actions for 2023 that we did. I don't know how many phone calls you guys might get personally, but we thought this might be a little bit of a tool. I've got it on the counter for my, my girls and stuff, too. Charity designed it for us to kind of, a brief synopsis of what we did through the county, and, and, you know, it states what the state mandates we have to be at, you know, 100% market value on deal, or, excuse me, residential and commercial property, and then ag is 75% of market value. We do get that, an acceptable range, so it mentions in here, you know, where we were at. So you'll see, if we did not fall within that acceptable range, that's why we made the increases that we did and where we did them. So it just might help you guys a little bit.
Sir, you have, you have stated this for, for 2023, correct?
Yeah. And basically, if you're looking for anything other than commercial, it's gonna be in here. Almost everything in the county, with the market being as, you know, active and as it is, about everything was out of compliance this year, except for our commercial, which we had just done a commercial review, so.
And you have a certain range of actual value that you have to have stated on the valuation.
Yep, and I think that's all, all in there if you take a look through it and, and, instead of you, that way you kind of know what we did, so you're not bombarded and not know what's going on if you get the phone calls, because we've been getting plenty.
I would suspect some folks wanted to chat with you.
Yeah.
I would suspect that's true.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting that together.
You bet. If you have any questions, give us a call or come see us.
Good information. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any further comments and questions for Julie in regards to the valuation assessments? Anything else to come, any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? If not, we will adjourn at nine, no, we will, yeah, we will adjourn Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:37, and reconvene as Lincoln County Board Commissioners. Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider web GIS subscription renewal for the county assessor.
This is just our standard contract. Previous contract we were in before was a five-year contract, and I opted to do the one-year contract this year. I sent a copy to Tyler, and he kind of looked through, and basically the same as what we've done in many prior years, so it's just a standard contract. One is for the website that the taxpayers can see, and the other one is the support that, like, if there is anything that needs done or corrected on that website, GIS workshop goes in and does all that correction for. So that's why there are two separate contracts.
I have one here for a web GIS subscription renewal assessor tab, and a second one for standard, well, let's see, my.
Technical support.
We're gonna take care of first one first.
Yeah, that's fine, because there are two separate ones.
Discuss and consider web GIS subscription renewal for the county assessor. Anything else here I need, we need to cover? Say this is a one-year subscription?
Yes, one-year renewal, yep.
Total annual cost, $3,406, is that correct?
Yes. We do get the discount because there, you know, the other offices have tabs, the clerk's office, and planning, emergency management has a tab, so, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Colleagues, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I would move to accept the web GIS subscription renewal for the county assessor for a one-year term in the amount $3,406. It's authorized chairman to sign, thank you.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next companion agenda item is discussing, consider standard assessor GIS technical support renewal agreement. And this one is total annual fees, $16,317. And what does, tell me again what this renewal is in regards to?
This, when we first had this GIS setup, we had a GIS technician in our office. Because when they built it from the beginning, he had to actually go in and put every single parcel number in there, make sure every parcel boundary was drawn in. They scanned in our old cadastral maps, but if something didn't get, you know, updated correctly on those maps, then it wasn't gonna be on the new website. So for quite a few years, we had a GIS tech in the office, and once we kind of got that up and going and everything up to date, to me, there was really no need to be a full-fledged salary for what, you know, what he had to do to do the upkeep. So basically, this replaced him. So anytime we have maybe a new replat, where they combine three lots into one big lot, parcel number may have changed, or section is split and off 10 acres to the sun or whatever, somebody has to actually go in and draw that on the maps, change the parcel boundaries, add a new parcel number. They also maintain the layers, like if I've got it as irrigated, dry, or grass, and they change land use, all of those layers are there. So GIS website, the technicians there do that for us now. We submit a ticket into them, and so it's much, much cheaper than an actual salary employee for a full year.
Julie, if you have a land sale and the survey determines the acreage is incorrect, is that fixed within this system?
Yes, if we have a survey with it, yes, GIS.
Because that typically was something that does happen, correct?
Yep, yep. GIS can read those meets and bounds descriptions very.
Acres that people assumed for decades sometimes are not.
Yeah, if there's a survey, yeah, then we will definitely.
So this'll check, or, once that's discovered, this'll fix that.
Yep.
Okay. Colleagues, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I would move to accept the standard assessor GIS technical support renewal agreement in the amount, Julie, help me out.
16,100, or 317.
$16,317, unauthorized, chairman to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for Julie? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luer.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Sorry to give you writer's crap.
Okay, it is 9:45. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider setting a date to accept bids for a multi-use building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices. Good morning.
Good morning. Brad Myers, Director of Region 51 Emergency Management.
Okay, sir, we have you back again this week. And what have we got available for us for some ideas in regards to what this building will look like?
Tammy, could you run a print for me, please?
I think we've got a rough draft over here.
Actually, it's less rough, that's on a notebook that went to an acre ground breaking.
Oh, I see, okay, you know, you're in good shape there.
At least it's not on a barnyard, Ken.
No, actually, I stayed out of there. I came back to the ballgame, and that's where the rest of it.
And thank you to Brandon for being flexible on your schedule.
Yep.
Raleigh, thanks for escorting Tristan into the courthouse. We appreciate you.
Even though we didn't get the commissioners in schedule in time, we still were able to take care of our business.
Good morning, Tristan.
Good morning.
I knew which one that is, because she said it was one that didn't have a file, came in late.
Worked pretty well, though, don't it?
Oh, my goodness gracious.
So, where are they gonna be?
I had Tyler last week at the end of our meeting, and he said he saw nothing that had been known in response to a lot of these.
While we're waiting, I did meet with Brandon, and I went over and looked at the storage that Becky has for, yeah, I'm gonna call them voting machines, I don't really know what they are. I didn't, I didn't look at the vote counter and some of those other stuff. It's in another location. We did get a square footage and a size required for most of that stuff that would need conditioned space, so I think we have that. I know planning and zoning was also looking for some space. So what we tried to do is, in working with Brandon, if you will take the sheet that has the floor plan on the bottom, if you could, it's kind of hard to read, but what that's supposed to represent is a building that's roughly 60 feet by 48 feet, with perhaps a little concrete apron around it, if, if nothing more, at least a six-foot concrete walkway around it. So that, and I'll tell you, starting from the left on that, there's room to get Brandon's van in there, the trailer in there, so that if he does need to hook onto the trailer, it's right there, he just has to hook up and go. We have room on either side for storage that are requested. I think that we allowed like six foot or something to that effect. The one beside that, you wanna come up, Sheriff? As I understand, there might be a possibility of us losing a little bit of storage space where we have now, maybe some vehicles used that are held in evidence, Sheriff, is that a possibility of happening?
Yeah, it's getting a little crowded with the increase in crime for everybody to store their vehicles in the same spot, evidence vehicles.
Right now, the city is very gracious, we're using some of their space, but it is getting crowded. Like I said, they've indicated that maybe if we could find another location, it'd kind of be better. of be better for everybody. So what I tried to do was take and put a center bay down there for the sheriff that we could get in either three vehicles or two large pickups, maybe something to that effect, in that center bay. To the far right would be the condition space, and that would be six cubicles. I think that the veteran service officer mentioned that he has some stuff in his office that he would also like to have in a condition space. Right now, that's stacked up in his office, probably shouldn't be there. I allowed a couple of spaces for the county clerk, one for planning and zoning. That leaves two other small cubicles that are probably eight by 10 or 10 by 12, something like that, for additional storage, which if you look around the courthouse, everybody sort of has storage here and there. If you look at the other sheet of paper, you'll see what we tried to do, it's a little out of scale, but I tried to take the tall area that we required, the tall overhead door on the left-hand side for Brandon's area, and then make just a simple lean-to sloped-down roof, so that as we come down to the very short area on the right for the individual condition storage, those areas have a very low-volume ceiling and those kinds of things. Try to make it just as simple and probably ugly as possible, but at least a utilitarian use. One of those, the elevation on the, one with the sloped roof is the elevation looking at the side with the individual storage. The other one, other elevation is looking at the big, long sidewall of Brandon's space. So very, very rudimentary, but I think that probably, to the best of my knowledge, gets most of the things in there we discussed. Brandon?
So, I mean, it's, yeah, we're definitely finding other people that need more space than just us, so.
The bay that's on to the left, a 22-foot wide bay, that does provide room for the trailer in the back and then his mobile van, correct?
Yeah, the way we drew it up was, yeah, they would still leave us some room in front of it and room behind those two as well.
And then the storage on either side of that is your storage, correct?
On either, well, in that one solid bay, yes.
In that solid bay?
Yeah.
And do you need to have environmentally controlled storage areas?
At least one of those, yes.
That would be over on the other side of the.
Unless we make my whole bay that, so.
I think there's a need to do that from a cost standpoint, I'd rather just give you one of the small bays.
Yeah, we'll give you a little small space around, because that, I don't know the height of this here, I don't see the, but it looks quite high.
Yeah, I think that we started out with an 18-foot sidewall, so it could get a 16-foot door, if I remember, in the left bay, and whatever it comes down, and we're probably talking about an eight-foot E on the right-hand side, something to that effect, so.
So we probably wouldn't want to condition all of that space if we don't have to. But those six bays on the right-hand side, you think that provides enough for, you see you got two for county clerk?
I do, because, I do, yes.
And that leaves two others that aren't designated for anyone in particular?
That's right.
Except maybe Brandon.
Correct.
Sheriff, question on the evidence for vehicles. Looking down the road, as you mentioned, unfortunately, more crime, more need for storage evidence. On that lot, does a secured fence contribute to what your needs are?
No.
Buildings have to be in a building?
We would have to be out of the weather with our evidence vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
In case you need to preserve blood and such things.
Got it.
And maybe it's just too tight, but it would be nice, in my opinion, with this kind of storage, to have it definitely in a secure area such as our road shop, something that's fenced in, you know, with a good high fence, and I think that'd really be important to me, anyway.
To add to this, in addition to the buildings?
Yeah, I would either suggest moving locations or have a secured fence, one or the other.
That's kind of where I was going with, we have room to expand our needs on that lot, but where's Plan B?
Not really. This is about the biggest we can put on that lot. It's still considered residential, so we have to play by those games where we can't be 25, we have to be back 25 feet from the street, five feet from the dive team building, then we still need to leave room for Weems' department.
From a building standpoint, we can't go bigger, but if we fence in the lot, we have some leeway as far as having things outside that may be okay outside as far as vehicles are concerned, but.
I, possibly, yes, I, not evidence vehicles.
Not evidence vehicles, obviously.
Are there impound vehicles? We share with the police department, we've never been a little crowded down there, we auction and get rid of them, so.
Okay, so you don't see this will be a tsunami of more vehicles to park?
There won't be junk vehicles in there, it'll be strictly evidence.
And in that particular bay, I see there's potential storage along one wall, would that be Sheriff's Department of Storage?
We haven't talked to the sheriff about getting any, we gave him a little bay for his cars, I didn't want to give him any more than that.
I see.
No, facetiously, he's not aware of dry storage, okay?
But there is potentially room in there for dry storage.
And they've got some upstairs, too.
That would have to be just strictly for the sheriff's office if they're using that for evidence.
Because it'd have to be.
It'd have to be secured with controlled access, so.
Which brings me to the question, so the individual storage base for the different county offices, those all have individual outside access just to their room?
Just to their rooms.
They don't have access to the rest of the building?
No, just their space.
Very good, I like that.
Be like here, where there'd be some kind of ma, well, in some cases, there'd be a master, not in all, okay?
Okay, so I think a question that we had last week that we still probably need to determine is, is this building of such size and scope that we need to have an architectural?
No, sir, I'm going to say that this is an agricultural storage building in nature, not required.
How, how many bays did that leave us without crowding Brandon? Because, I mean, it's his, it's his primary need. I don't want to get this to where we're crowding him out of space and.
He's got room for his van and his trailer and storage on both sides of that bay, 22-foot wide, does that give you what you need to have?
For the most of the stuff, yes, and then just one closet that's controlled.
Yep.
And we have two that are unlabeled, so.
And the reason it worked out that way, Sheriff, is because when I changed the configuration of the room, rather than Brandon basically taking two bays, I narrowed it into one bay, used the length, that freed up some space, i.e., freed up space first against the storage for the sheriff.
And if he needs to get the trailer out, he's probably going to have it behind the van, or he can move the van.
Right, and he said he's not going to have the trailer out unless the van's out more times than not, so.
That's good use of that.
I would say, very rarely does the trailer come just by itself, so, there are sometimes, but, yeah, it's still easy enough, pull the bus out, hook on the trailer and pull it out.
Okay, super.
What trailer is that?
Our third trailer.
Okay, so, looks like the, we need to set a date to accept bids, is that correct? With this is the rough drawing.
It could be a little bit better now, but.
How much evidence space did that leave?
You've got a 14-foot wide bay that's, what, four, how long?
Sixty feet.
Okay, Becky?
But that's the non-conditioned, that's a vehicle space.
Now, is there going to be some space above?
There will be on that, you know, what I, yes, there will be. Whether we just come across that with, I thought maybe it'd step down for us, I don't know if it's going to be cheaper to let them do it with the two-by-sixes, I'm going to let, they can do that, I don't know, whatever's least expensive.
But that will be in the bid specifications that we want to have?
Well, actually, what I thought we should do is just put something that we're putting this out for an agricultural-type storage building, whether it's a pole barn, whether they want to stick build it, whatever they want to do, and just say that it needs to be the minimum requirements to be constructed in the city of North Platte, and put some things like that, have them put the specification sheet together and put some bids in, very much, you know, like the, probably the people that you talk to, those kinds of people.
And these bays on the right-hand side, they would have heating and air conditioning built in?
What I thought about is just having, this is just me, just a little mini-split-up in there, so that, you know, it's like a through-the-wall, you have a little heating and air conditioning thing.
Might be the cheapest route to go, and then if you're not utilizing bays, you're not paying heat and coolant.
So each one of these rooms would have their own climate control?
It's like having my garages.
Now, the wall between, or the wall that would be on either side of the vehicle evidence, would those need to be specified as metal as opposed to?
No, sir, well.
For your, for evidence prevention.
We just need people out of it, I mean, even if it was a chain link, it wouldn't matter to us, we just need those, we just need to preserve our evidence, we can't have anybody messing around it.
Yes, Brandon won't be boring through the wall to get over there.
I don't know, it's sketchy.
It's not, it's not a secured building, it's not like a hardened building or mason or anything like that, it's just a storage building, that's where it is.
Mr. Chairman, question for Becky. Where this has been a budgeted item for two years now, how do we need to have the bid date before the end of this fiscal year, or what is your guidance in that regard?
Well, do, the last, they've been more lenient due to supply issues and things like that, so I think if we can show or make a good faith effort, that doesn't really have to probably happen before the end of this budget year, as they can see we're trying to work towards getting a bid date.
Do we have enough days in the calendar month to provide the appropriate notice for the bid process to still have it this month, or is this something we should carry on to next month?
I, this is just me speaking, but I think that with something as rudimentary as we're probably going to have, it's going to take, in my opinion, a little bit more, and some notes that you have to comply with, a couple of things, I'd rather see that cleaned up and maybe have us have just a little bit of time, so that we can make sure that if two or three people look at doing this work, at least they're kind of bidding on the same thing. That's me.
So we'd, so you'd rather push it back a little bit and come up with more of a CAD drawing?
Hearing what Becky said, well, not even that, even if it's not CAD, but, yeah, yes, I would.
So, any idea as far as a date on how long that would take?
I, I, I will try to get most of my work done. I think this week, if I'm not losing a gallon, I told her she could take three days off to go to the East Coast, I don't remember when I told her she could take it off, but I'll get that done this week.
And then we bring it back, set a date, keep it up.
Sure, is there a building committee? Why don't I work with the building committee if I can, would that be okay with you? So I'm just kind of doing this in the dark or something?
Yeah.
Or maybe have them work with you, and then we could bring it back for a bid date or whatever you want to do.
But I'm not qualified to give a CAD drawing, so. To provide that detail, so.
Oh, no, I mean, I will, we'll do that, that's not a problem, I just want somebody else to look at it, that's all.
This lady right here is as detailed as they get.
So do we need to table this, then, for?
Sounds to me like.
I would.
We've got, we've got a really a good start, but we need a little more detail?
I think so.
To send it to a.
Yeah, to let some people bid better.
So after we have Brandon up and conversed, Brandon's comfortable, you're comfortable?
Sure, yeah.
This is, plus we're solving some other issues.
Okay, so we would have you come back for a third week if you're willing to do that, would you?
I'll be here.
What time should we have Brandon come next week?
Uh, 9:30.
9:30?
Be up by then, will you? Oh, yeah, you will. Maybe you could escort Tristan in, I don't know, maybe, well, just an idea, just an idea.
And wait to be here before 10.
Okay, so we're going to table this item till we get a little more detail on, and I'd like to thank you guys, and Joe, thank you for the work that you've done on this.
Okay, that'll work out this week, guys.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we tabled that item. Okay, next item on our agenda is discuss and consider proposed amendment to the contract with Summit Foods for Lincoln County Detention Center. And you gentlemen would happen to be?
We represent the sheriff's office in the kitchen and contract with Summit Foods. Chief Deputy Kramer and Sheriff Kramer.
Good morning, Chief Deputy Kramer.
Good morning.
Good morning, both of you gentlemen. So, let me guess, you've had a little discussion with Summit Foods?
Well, a little bit a while back, I think. Tyler's had a little more correspondence with them than we have.
So I'm actually the one that put this on here, so the board can make a formal consideration of their proposed amendment. What you want to do is up to you, legally speaking, I would tell you to tell them no. They're getting better. Last year, it was, I think, July, when they wanted their retroactive price increase. This year, it was late April, early May, with no retroactive, so we're getting them there.
Because the contract actually starts.
Yeah, so the section 2.4 in the contract from 15 years ago, it's been amended 10 times, requires them to get all price updates, requests for price updates into the county, I think later than February 15.
And that amendment has always been per-contract CPI?
So the amendment itself actually works out to be based on the CPI's Food Away From Home Index, so the price increases are indexed to something, they can't just pull out a number that makes them feel good, which is what they keep trying to do. Last year, I sent them a letter politely declining their proposed increase, instead the county extended them the 7.7% increase that the CPI allowed for, they took that, didn't take the rest of my advice, though. So here we are again. I would recommend that the board not adopt the proposed amendment to the Summit Food contract, and instead probably authorize me to send them a letter back declining that. And if the board would like to consider another increase based on the CPI, due to the longstanding relationship we had with Summit, that's super, we can do that.
They continue to ignore the detail of the contract, to your point, well taken.
They do, but they also continue to be the cheapest option.
So we did discuss this briefly last week, Sheriff, and somebody said, I don't know who said, if we deny it and they turn out their pockets and walk away from us, we'll have to find another vendor, but we're going to have to find another vendor anyway if we can't afford this one.
Well, and I don't know where they're coming up with their numbers, because their proposal this year, I did a comparison with another jail they do business with, and if we use the proposal that they gave us this year, we would be paying 25, 26 cents a meal for 450 meals a day, more than their other client in Nebraska. But if we do, they're 9% according to the contract, 9% CPI this year, we'd actually be 25 cents less than their other customer, which really isn't our problem, we've held up our end of the contract every year for 15 years, we've given them exactly what the contract says. Since 2019, they have never held up their end of the contract, they've always given us their increase in our next fiscal year that really messes up my budget. 25 cents a meal for 450 meals for half a year is a lot of money, and it really screws with me, so. I don't know why they can't get this straight, it's the same contract for 15 years, we've had some, of course, it went from CBM to Summit and some administrative changes, but that's really not the problem of Lincoln County. changes, but that's really not the problem of Lincoln County.
So are you comfortable that we take legal advice and deny that? Is that the, is that what you're saying?
And whatever the CPI is, just go with the contract, yeah.
Contract's a contract.
Yes, and that CPI is something that we did last year, we would do this year.
If that's what the board wants to do, that is what I would include in the letter back to Summit is, I would let them know that the board formally denied their proposed amendment, but would counter propose an increase based on the CPI Food Away From Home index per the contract.
I like, I like that approach.
I think their, I think their proposed contract also included that that would be nationwide CPI, the largest of, that really opens them up to, I don't really want to do CPI based on the eastern, west coast.
No, no, no.
In ours, right, and how it's written, on the Midwest region?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think, I think that's what was mentioned, Midwest region.
Okay, colleagues, what's your pleasure, I see Commissioner Brunz, you, you got something you want to say?
No, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, I would move that we deny the proposed amendment to the contract with Summit Foods for the Lincoln County Detention Center and authorize both the sheriff and the deputy county attorney to engage in discussions with Summit Foods based on the language of our contract regarding the CPI.
We have a motion.
I'll second for discussion.
And we have a second, considering discussion. Eric, no.
Does, does that mean then that the deputy county attorney will return next week with that agreed-upon language?
Just to engage in conversation, so however long that takes, they're not making a determination on whether they're accepting, that's still the prerogative in this board.
My intention would be to simply write them a letter declining their proposed amendment, counter proposing the CPI increase, and then letting them prepare a revised amendment according to those numbers.
Good, that answers my question, thank you.
Super, any other discussion? None. We'll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Hi.
Woodruff. Hi, thank you, gentlemen. Hey, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider official naming of the inland port authority, and I am going to turn this discussion over to the inland port authority ad hoc subcommittee, being Commissioners Brunz and Weems, Commissioner Brunz, would you like to lead this off?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, so as you all are aware, work has been, we're going on this for a couple of years now, today we have a truly historic and monumental task in front of us that is, is extremely exciting, particularly with the next couple of agenda items. The first item that we have before us is actually naming the inland port, we have the unique opportunity to do that, and as we discussed several weeks ago, even a couple months ago, putting this out on our county website, on the landing page for the inland port, to encourage the general public to offer suggestions for us to consider, we believe you all have a long list included in your packets and that has been emailed out from Tammy, various names that have been offered up for consideration, really, in my opinion, there's some great names on here that capture a lot of the characteristics of our local community, I think that it's important for us, as we're going through and considering this opportunity to name this port that'll have an impact on generations to come, from an economic development standpoint and driving our local economy, that when we think of a name, there's a few key things that we keep in mind, I think that we do need to have a name that's pretty descriptive with regard to our location, our culture, but I also think that we need to also include in that name characteristics that embody the function of what we're doing with the port and the reach that this port is going to have, particularly when you think of different businesses or entities that may be on a global stage, because this will have international reach, if they're looking at where's this, their goods or, or products going, and they're looking at different ports in, in the shipping matrix in that process, from their understanding, I, I think that it's important for, for them to not be, the name not be so anecdotal to our understanding, as far as our local awareness of very specific cultural things, but probably have a little bit more broad understanding, that way if somebody, say, is in Australia, just hypothetically, that they know this destination, that this product is going to generally where it is, and can easily identify that. So with that said, I mean, we have a long list, I don't know that I'm going to go through all these names, there's, everybody has a long list, and there are dozens of suggestions.
I've got something I could add to that.
Okay.
This is rudimentary research, but to the, to Chris's point about steering away from generalities, or something that's, that's well-known locally but has no context for those across the country or internationally, you know, was brought to our attention here the last couple of years, that Visit North Platte wanted to change their name, because Lincoln County, there's so many Lincoln, Lincoln, Nebraska specifically was the confusion, and if my, again, it's rudimentary, but if my research is correct, there's 35 cities in the United States named Lincoln, so if you put Lincoln County in there, there's also 24 counties in the United States, 16 for Abe, Honest Abe, and eight for General Lincoln from the Revolutionary War, so to Chris's point about getting it, giving it some descriptive definition that's unique, I, would be my initial suggestion, that would maybe look at names that don't hang their hat on Lincoln or Lincoln County alone, I would rather see Nebraska in the name, but at any rate, I don't want, didn't mean to derail your, no thought process, Chris, but that's something I think is important.
That's exactly why I brought that point up, because there's, there's a lot on here, and, and there's a lot of anecdotal names in here, while creative, and I like them, people may not understand Flatwater, other that live here.
Flat Rock.
Flat Rock, even, even Bill Cody, while we're proud of our heritage in, in the wild, wild west, that it, that may not have the, the broad understanding globally, so to Kent's point, I actually am going to offer up a couple more names in addition to what we have here, if you want to write them down, I personally like something that includes Heartland in it, you see, I did, I did submit a recommendation on, on the list, but I would also offer up Heartland Harbor International Port, as well as International Port at Nebraska Gateway, for consideration, ultimately, the decision is going to be a group decision. Tammy, I had Tammy, right, a very brief little voting sheet, thank you for your work on this, Tammy, she's done a lot of, a lot of the lifting in the background on this, and I want to make sure that that credit is, is given where it's due, but as we consider these, I would ask that if you're going through this list, you write down your, your top three in rank ordered preference, I know it's going to be difficult, and then we'll collect those up and see if we can find some consensus on that, but with that, I mean, I would open this up to.
I would like to make one last, specific offer online, I'll share you my, my versions of, of a number of repetitive names and, and themes, first one would be Nebraska Port of the Plains, which differentiates us to the eastern ports that are going to exist in Omaha and Lincoln area, be Greater Nebraska Inland Port, and again, for the same reason, Greater Nebraska being outstate, further defining in my view, the location, and the third that made my shortlist was Western Nebraska Inland Port, or some version there of, you could change that to International Port, but things that differentiate us, and again, I, I feel strongly about the fact that if you leave Nebraska in the name, there's only one Nebraska, so that, that's, I agree with that.
You know, I, my three were Central, Western, and Greater, all had Nebraska, but you ask, you, you said, put them one, two, three, that's tough, but I couldn't concur more, people, it's pretty easy to find, if not, you Google, there's only one Nebraska.
One last point, just before everybody else weighs in?
I got one point after you.
Is this you? Are you on the same page? No?
Um, probably not.
Okay, probably not, well, one of the, one very unique submission was for a fallen soldier named Private First Class Michael R. Jarrett, and I thought long and hard about that, because it's, I think it's important to recognize our service, our veterans, fallen veterans, but maybe as a secondary, and that's not today necessarily, but maybe at some point in time, we call the terminal building or dedicate that terminal building after this fallen veteran, something to consider later on, but I wanted to note that, because I thought it was important that this was submitted, and I appreciate that they did.
That would be in line with, with my thoughts on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we go any further, my hand wasn't quite fast enough when you were talking with your three choices, would you give me those one more time, so I can jot those down?
Sure, so my, my three choices.
You mentioned three.
And here, to, to that, my, my point with my three choices, I don't know that we need inland in the name, I think that's going to be understood of, of our geographic location, if there's anybody considering this, my proposal would be is if you replace inland with international, that shows the far reach that this will have, but my three choices, offering them up, are Heartland International Port of Commerce, I think that encapsulates, you know, what is going on out there, what will go on out there, I like Heartland Harbor International Port, and I like International Port at Nebraska Gateway.
International.
Or at Nebraska Gateway. But I like any other three that Kent offered up too, so.
And, and, and I, I think that's really nice, you know, you make a good point, I think everyone knows this is an inland port, and it kind of makes sense when we're thinking about inland port, but the international aspect has some, has some value as well.
And you could take, there's so many other ideas on this sheet that the public has offered up, and many of them include inland, and if you just interchanged inland with international, I think that, that bumps them.
You know, I guess I would ask the question is if you take out some of the wording, how would they know it's an inland port? For example, it has the word port in it, and if it doesn't have inland, and if it doesn't have Nebraska in it, doesn't have something to refer to it, some of these, you know, you, I don't know how you would know, for example, if it were a Greenbrier port or Crossroads port, you know, a port, I wouldn't know that would be inland.
I actually, I, I have to say that that's the way I interpret it as well, if you say inland, that defines that it is in fact an inland port.
Good point.
It's still going to be international, I think that's, to me, that's a given, that it's, because you're going to receive intermodal freight, some coming off the Port of Los Angeles, for example, on other origins, port of origins, but I think that's a foregone conclusion in my mind, I wasn't thinking of that element, but we haven't heard from Kayla.
Naming things is not my strong suit, both of my kids have three-letter names.
Hey you.
I have a dog named Cat and a cat named Dog, and, so.
Okay, so we'll pass over this discussion, let's go on to the.
I will, I will say, I, I had two pretty strong choices, and they both had either Platte River or Platte Valley, until when I heard you speak about having Nebraska in the name, I do agree with that.
Well, you've got, the Platte runs many hundreds of miles in Wyoming.
Yes.
As well as Colorado.
What I did was just Googled geographical description of Nebraska, and it, I think it said, located at the confluence of the north and south Platte Rivers, forming the Platte River Valley.
Which is Nebraska, which means Flatwater.
Right, if you Google Colorado, it doesn't mention the Platte River at all, so, for me, that's where I was going, but I do like the suggestion of having Nebraska in there, and if, if you take the time to look up Nebraska, you know it's inland, so I'm not sure I believe that inland needs to be part of the name, but I, I kind of like Kent's suggestion of Nebraska, I was going Nebraska International Port of the Plains, and that was just a few minutes ago, so, that's where I'm at. How about you, Jerry, I don't know that we've heard from you.
I'm, I'm deferring to Commissioner Hughley.
You didn't hear him, you didn't hear his three?
Yeah, I did, I guess I did, yeah.
That was a good point, he glanced, he gave one, and I'll defer. We handed them that way, or what are we doing? Is she collecting and doing the first tally?
I think what we're going to do is we're going to write down three, three choices correct, and we'll have, what kind of point value?
First choice has three.
Three, two, and one.
Second choice has two.
Three, two, three, two, and one.
Three, two, and one.
I think it's, I think you have a sheet there, Mr. Chairman, that should have it, has the three, right?
I have scribbled all over mine.
I'm going to guess I've probably misplaced it, I'll make one.
Here's one.
I, I got one right here.
I'll take a, I'll take a fresh one.
I might write on that one.
You want me to write up my favorite cat?
I'll figure it out.
Brownie.
No, I was just going to.
I'm not naming things, it's not.
Thank you.
We have a dog named Puppy.
Are they coming to Becky or?
Tammy.
Becky?
I have two of them, so.
Actually, I did, Becky wouldn't let me turn the other one in. Actually, I did, Becky wouldn't let me turn the other one in.
Oh, we can not vote twice.
A lot of good ideas.
Instead of vote, I didn't. While Board Assistant is telling that information, we will start with the next agenda item, if that's okay with my colleagues. And that agenda item is discussion, discuss recommendation of candidates by the Inland Port Authority Committee for the Inland Port Authority Board of Directors. And again, Commissioner Bruns, would you lead this discussion with Commissioner Williams?
Absolutely. And I would actually invite Gary Pearson, President and CEO of the North Platte Area Chamber of Development Corporation, to come up in case anybody has questions for him, as he is on that committee along with Deputy County Attorney Tyler Volkmer, and both Commissioner Williams and myself. So, that way, we're all here, and for discussion purposes, should anybody have any questions.
Gary, thank you for coming to join us today.
Good morning, Gary.
So, the committee has met, and we've gone through the long list of nearly a couple dozen applicants.
Which, let me add, was impressive.
It's.
Very impressive. And this is a difficult choice, I want to make that clear right of.
It is, this, this is a very difficult decision, one that I've wrestled with over the past couple of weeks, quite strongly. This board is going to have a lot of work cut out for them, as the inaugural Board of Directors Inland Port. It is not, that is just going to be entitled only, it's going to be, at least for the initial couple of years, few years, a very engaged working board, working to set up strong lines of infrastructure, financing, revenue generation, working hand-in-hand with the Chamber and Development Corporation, and enticing business and industry to come in and invest and develop in, in the overall industrial rail park out near Hershey, working hand-in-hand with Lincoln County and the Village of Hershey, as far as all the vast moving parts that are associated with development. They've got their work cut out for them. And I applaud those that have applied, because they, and I've spoken, I know, and I've spoken with virtually every candidate, there was only one or two candidates that I, I've reached out to and never heard back from. But they all understand this, to my understanding, and they understand the work that's going to be required of them, should they be appointed. And I applaud them for that. And I want to make sure that that's, that's clear as well, because the list of candidates that you all have before you, every single one of them, I believe truly understands the vision of what we're trying to accomplish. They understand the impact that this is going to have, they're very civic-minded, and for them to, to throw their hat in the ring and be willing to undertake this endeavor speaks volumes of who they are as individuals. And, and the committee wrestled with this, and we met, oh goodness, a couple of weeks ago now. And you all have the summary of the committee's meeting. I don't want to editorialize on any one candidate's criteria or qualifications. You all have their, their applications and their resumes before you. And I've encouraged you all, because we, we just simply, for lack of logistical time constraints, we don't have time to interview them all in a public setting, so I encouraged you all to reach out and ask your questions of the candidates on your own accord. And so I trust that you all have done that and taken the due diligence that you need in your decision-making process. But I would open it up to the other members of, of the committee to offer up their thoughts. We did offer a shortlist of, of strong candidates for the first handful of spots. I would point out that we did have a couple candidates that were really strong, that were recruited, that ended up having to withdraw their names from consideration due to, as we were doing our due diligence as a committee, requesting them to check with the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Commission for potential conflicts of interest. And it was determined that they, they did have potential conflicts, and so they willingly removed themselves from consideration. So, you all have that information in front of you. Commissioner Williams, what are your thoughts on this?
Just, again, as Chris states, after much deliberation, we developed a consensus on the shortlist that we strongly think round out the field, so to speak. But once you get past kind of a common acceptance of those people as being key players on the committee, it's, it's hard to differentiate. There's so many good people that are, remain on the list beyond, beyond those five or six folks that we, that we came to an agreement on. And as you go down that list, there are a number of those folks that I had on my list, Chris didn't have on his, Tyler didn't have, and Gary didn't have. So, we, we really didn't want anybody to rule out anyone, because everyone's, in this community, you know, you've had business dealings with folks and have a better perspective on various applicants that they may, I may have, or Chris might have, or Gary, and so forth. So, as much as anything, in order not to just start with a, you know, with a dartboard approach, because we have so many good applicants, we said, we're going to define those people that we all feel on a consensus really are going to be a solid servant on this commission. So, that's where we left it. And as Chris said, we invited, you know, all of you to make those inquiries, give your own personal considerations to other candidates that are on the application list. Again, we reiterate, we've all been able to read through their resumes, and some of them, as myself, I recruited a couple people personally, because I know their skillset, and I've done business with them. And unfortunately, one of those funny people had to withdraw, but, again, that, we're kind of there. It's in black and white for you to review. If, back to the same approach with the inland port, you know, everybody's got a tally sheet. If you feel strongly about a candidate that wasn't on our shortlist, that's great, put them down.
To Kent's point, that shortlist, the six names that we offered up on the shortlist, we felt that the various different areas of expertise, that they met the functions of, of those areas, and what's going to be needed for this inaugural Board of Directors from a college standpoint, to hit the ground running. I would also point out that this Port Authority, this, this Board of Directors, is going to have a pot of money that has been set aside by the Nebraska Legislature through the Department of Economic Development. Currently, that pot of money is at five million. This next fiscal year, it goes up to 10 million. And I know of legislation that will be introduced early on in, in next January, that will seek to expand that, that pot of money. But it is for the use of inland ports in the state of Nebraska. And currently, we will only have to, likely, we will only have to, moving forward, to utilize for building out infrastructure and for the operations. And a key area that I think that both of the ports in the state are going to be utilizing some of those funds for, is hiring both legal and, and consulting services. I've, I've spoken with a couple firms, there's one firm that, that I've had numerous conversations with, a set of lawyers that, that have experience both setting up inland ports and working and representing them throughout the country for many, many years. And I would highly recommend that whoever we appoint, that they, they seek out those services, utilizing those funds that have been set aside, because it's going to be very important for, for them, to make sure as they set up their bylaws, that they're doing it in, in a manner that reduces potential points of consternation and friction in the future, and allows them to, to take advantage of the opportunities in front of them. So, just putting that piece of information out there.
Question and point of clarification from my standpoint is, the, the length of the term of these positions is staggered.
Mm-hmm.
There's nine members on this board. What is the longest term? Is it three years, or is it four? Three years. Three years. So does it make sense that three candidates would have three-year terms? Three would have two-year terms? Three would have one-year terms?
That is, that is how the inaugural board will be established. And then at the end of that term, whether it be the three that have a one-year initial term, or the three that have the two-year initial term, every year, we will have three candidates before this board to either reappoint, or to appoint new people to that Board of Directors.
And just because they got a one-year term designation today, or when we make that determination, just a matter of, we have to have three of three each.
Exactly. It is not a matter of consequence in that regard, so.
Is there a number of terms, consecutive terms, that they can serve?
There is no limit on a number of terms, there's no term limits, so to speak.
Thank you.
For the Port Authority.
Okay, if we could take a break on that subject. Tyler, is it proper for me to go back and name this port right now?
You probably should.
Okay. We have a tally here, and it's a fairly strong winner of Nebraska International Port of the Plains.
I like it.
I like it a lot.
I hope you do, because that's what it's called.
Can we, can we make that into an acronym?
Nip Top? I don't know, that isn't really resonating yet. We'll have to work on it. No, I think that is very, well, and I would applaud my colleagues here for the input that we had on this discussion, because it did give us some points to consider that I thought were very good. And we had some, we had a couple others that really fell in with good vote tallies as well, but Nebraska International Port of the Plains covers an awful lot of what we wanted to talk about.
So, then would the authority be called the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Authority? Or it'd be called Port Authority?
I don't.
The Port Authority of.
I don't need an answer.
It might be.
I don't need an answer.
Simply the Port Authority at Nebraska International Port of the Plains.
There we go. Good enough. You got that down, George? Tristan, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, we're going to go back to the item that we were just discussing before I interrupted you.
Probably need a motion in the second.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that this board names the newly-created inland port the Nebraska International Port of the Plains.
We have a motion.
Well, for discussion purpose, I'll second.
Then we have a second. And that discussion would be?
I don't have any discussion.
Okay. Colleagues, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Damn right. Okay. Edit that, please.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go back to discussion, discuss recommendation of candidates by the Port Authority Committee in Nebraska International Port of the Plains for the Board of Directors.
So, to continue on with the last point that I have, and I'd welcome any comment from Gary or Tyler as well. We wanted to make sure that we had an individual with strong rail logistics background, somebody that understood what it was going to take to actually design and lay out track, the differences between light track and heavy track, and, and strong relationships with the railroad. We felt that that was probably chief among all of the criteria that we were looking for. And so you'll see a candidate on there in that regard. We also felt that other areas of logistics were important, both trucking and air, even though the airport is not physically part of the inland port district. That may change in future legislation. But regardless, we wanted to see strong synergy built with our strong airport that we do enjoy here in Lincoln County. We wanted to make sure that we had somebody with strong legal background, financial background, both from a financing standpoint and an auditing and accounting standpoint. I mean, the amount of money that this port potentially could see flowing through it and impacting our regional economy is tremendous. And so making sure that that is under tight check is, is going to be key. We wanted to see somebody that had some infrastructure construction background. We also felt that it was very important to have somebody as, we anticipate roughly 50% of the business done in the port will be agricultural-based, or value-added agricultural-based, that we have somebody on there that understands the industry and is able to represent the agricultural community strong, strongly. That was, that was key. Strong business background, somebody that understands planning and zoning and commercial development, industrial development, those were also areas that we felt were extremely important. So, you'll see those kind of encompassed in the shortlist that we provided. And the other candidates that are, that have applied do enlarge, augment, and strongly support all of those areas in one facet or another. And so, Gary, did you have anything to add to these comments?
The overall, just as you captured, Jerry, I mean, it was just outstanding credentials. I mean, it's really says a lot about people pretty excited about what's going on in the North Platte Area and Lincoln County, and, and the wonderful opportunities we have ahead of ourselves, and to have that many people with so many outstanding credentials. It made it extraordinarily tough to, to go through that. But I think you also then have a pool of potential candidates, you know, should somebody not serve in the future too, that the door doesn't close necessarily.
That's, that's really a good point, is that, that's nice to have that pool of very community-minded individuals that are willing to serve in that regard, and have them available should something happen that, if they're not chosen the first time, they're still in that pool. Great point.
And the only other thing I would say is, obviously, with the 300 acres that we have for the potential development of the rail park, all of that is encompassed within inland port. So it's very, very important, there's a great working relationship there, you know, a number of different entities, obviously, Lincoln County, City of North Platte, Village of Hershey, in addition to the Chamber of Development Corporation and the Port Authority Board. So, I looked at some of that too, and making my judgment, you know, what's good chemistry, what, you know, people that obviously have a good feel for what's going on, and it's just extraordinarily tough. But Chris captured it well with the comments.
Okay, question for you, Tyler. Are these a one-off decision, or is it possible that our, our committee has given us six names here, that could we make a block decision on those six, or do we go individually?
So, to, if I, if I may.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, Tammy has developed a scoring sheet that has nine lines on here. The first six have a set point total, with the remaining three decreasing in point total. We just felt that the. We just felt that this was an equitable way for us to make our own determinations individually and whoever gets the most points, that would be who I would recommend be appointed.
Okay, I like that plan.
Do you have?
Yeah.
I have extra forms.
No, I do.
I made a mistake.
Should we come to a stalemate on a couple of the names? Those that are selected pretty heavily, I would say that we appoint them and we'll come back for a second round of discussion and maybe a second vote on the other names that are brought forward on this initial vote. That would be my recommendation as well, Mr. Chairman.
Accepted and...
So, the issues get handed to Tammy for tabulation?
Yes, that's correct.
Gary, I hear you're doing a heck of a job. Not only are you doing a bang-up job for Chamber Development, I understand that you're responsible for about two-thirds of the rain the farmers been getting.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Chamber Commerce Center, right? Nobody wants that job.
More to come was Nebraska land days on the...
More rain to come was Nebraska land days on the...
Notice they waited to start on our street down here until just, oh my goodness gracious, Nebraska land days coming and like that's what happened.
Okay, tabulation has begun. It's gonna take a little while, so...
As we, I have a couple more things to add that are related. Through the course of this summer, whoever we appoint, they will be finally meeting and working, as I said, ideally with the help of a consultant and legal counsel to establish their bylaws. I think that while we could not, based on state legislature, we could not establish a non-voting ex officio type advisory board, it does not preclude them from establishing that in their own bylaws on their own accord. Set of advisors that may be involved, I could reasonably see somebody from the power district, I could reasonably see somebody from the Village of Hershey, I could reasonably see somebody from the City of North Platte, potentially the community college. Because what is gonna transpire out there is, like I said, it's gonna have an impact and making sure that we have all the different stakeholders, if you will, on the same page as far as communication is gonna be key. When we have large developers coming in that are looking to create hundreds of jobs in their own right individually, when you look at the labor force, that's why I include, say, the community college, they're in full understanding of what's transpiring out there and they can adjust their curriculum and programs accordingly. That's gonna be, I think, a very essential part of the puzzle. So, I wanna relay that whoever we appoint, that they understand that and that is important, in my opinion, to see that happen. While we can't require that based off of state statute and the resolution that we put forward, that doesn't mean that they can.
Okay, a question that comes to my mind, if we do, in fact, select nine individuals today, what is the process should one or more decline that position?
Well, part of the application process was, were they willing, should we appoint them to fulfill the term? So, I think that they've all made that commitment. But should they resign or not be willing, then we would then have a strong pool of candidates to either choose from or we could open up an application window again to seek additional candidates.
Okay.
And that would be the course should they ever have a resignation at any point moving forward.
Okay, in that decision, we come back here to this...
That is one of the checks and balances that this board retains is the appointment of members to that Board of Directors in conjunction with, you know, owning that parcel here in the very near future that controls the spur.
Okay. Super. Took a few minutes to get that tabulation finished, so instead of just ponder the magnitude and the significance of this whole process. And it has been a fairly long process and I think it's very important that we recognize a lot of work went into this. Gary, you and your board were a major part of it. Trish, you were a major part of it as well. I think it's very important that we think back on a very major set of steps that have been taken for the benefit of Lincoln County and this area.
And it's just the beginning.
And without saying, there's a lot of individuals in the legislature that made a lot of this possible.
Yeah.
Thank God for both urban and rural senators. Sometimes they are able to work together.
This was, this was one of the rare occasions that you could see a complete lack of an urban rural divide. There was broad consensus on this bill a couple of years ago.
And both urban and rural, though?
Exactly.
I mean, this'll benefit not just our area, but every area branching out from around here and well into other states and regions.
Well, it'll be interesting to follow over the next two or three years as this thing evolves.
Very exciting.
Sorry.
Are we close?
Close to having information.
For you.
Signature pages I have.
Port Authority Board of Directors. The six names that were highly recommended by all of that subcommittee, all six of those did receive the highest vote counts. And I think it would be appropriate for me to name those six individuals, correct?
I think you can probably just name all nine.
Okay. Those six, Vince Dugan, Jim Hawkes, J. Patrick Keenan, Kirk Olson, Dwight Porter, Kimberly Then we had three other individuals that were very close in voting in the next tier. Next one would be LeAnn Ellis, Michael Steele and Kevin Ty.
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 I believe that's how it's pronounced.
That is where we are with the vote count as tallied and you have that information in front of you. So, what would be your, the board's pleasure? Would we accept those nine individuals as stated?
Bet you would get a motion to appear to accept one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint in the first three for a one-year term, the second three for a two-year term, and the third three for a three-year term. Mr. Vince Dugan, Mr. Jim Hawkes.
Stop. Didn't you say, I think you read it reverse order from what you wanted to. I think the first three, the last three, you wanted on a three-year term, didn't you?
We could, we could do that.
No, but I mean, did you want them on just the one-year term?
We could absolutely, we could reverse order this. We could put the first three that I read off in a three, to me, it makes no difference.
But what are you doing? The first three is...
Hold on just a minute here. I think there's some clarification that should be made. We have three top poll getters. I would suggest that those three be three terms, three-year terms. The next three, 'cause we've got those, one, two, three, they break out very nicely in these numbers if you look at it that way. That would be my suggestion.
I like it.
I was just asking clarification.
No, I think you're exactly right and I think that would make sense if we do it that way.
So, then I would, how about I make three motions?
Okay.
My first motion would be to appoint Mr. Vince Dugan, Mr. Dwight Porter and Mr. Kirk Olson for a three-year term serving on the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board of Directors. That would be my first motion.
You want a second, Ken, or I'm going to?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion in regards to the three names appointed to the three-year terms on the Inland Port Authority? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Friends.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Culey.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay. Your next motion, sir.
My next motion would be to appoint for a two-year term to the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board of Directors, Mr. Jim Hawkes, Mr. J. Patrick Keenan and Mrs. Kimberly Steger. Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Friends.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Culey.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we appoint for a one-year initial term to the Nebraska International Port of the Plains Board of Directors, Mr. Michael Steele, Mrs. LeAnn Ellis and Mr. Kevin Ty. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Friends.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Culey.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff. Aye. How is the official notification to these nine individuals?
Do you wanna call? I can call.
I think I'll leave that to the subcommittee.
Okay.
I think we should send out a formal letter, actually.
I think that's a great idea.
Rather than call folks, I think. And calling's fine.
Just formal letter is appropriate. Formal letter is absolutely appropriate.
I think that's very good. I can tell you, though, in making some important appointments in the past, we had some feelings hurt because we'll see it on the TV before that, but whatever, I think the formal letter's also a very good way to do that.
Unfortunately, there's no other way to approach this. It'll be here, so...
I think a formal letter to all the candidates is appropriate.
Absolutely. Because as to the point of people stepping away, we have a lot of, and by the way, my
nine didn't mirror this and I'm sure others, so what that, what's that says is there's a lot of quality people that didn't make this individual. So, that tells me we do have a deep bench and they're tremendous people and we want them to stay engaged and stay interested because they may have to step up to the plate sooner than later. So, we want to acknowledge everyone that applied and thank them with a letter.
I think that's a great approach and thank you, board, for your diligent research, your careful thought in this regard and monumental, momentous sort of a move here. And Gary, we thank you again for your input and your help.
I know my decision relied heavily on the committee members because I know for every conversation I had about the board for this important entity coming to our county, you guys probably had forty conversations. And so, the information you provided to me was invaluable in making the decision.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there need for a closed session, Tyler?
Uh, there's not.
Good. Next item on our agenda is here are concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representative. You don't have anything for us? Jason?
Excuse me, just a minute.
Holy smokes, nobody wants to stop us now. Tristan and George will be leaving here pretty soon too. They don't want anything out of us either, I'll bet.
And I believe we're done with plains also to this point.
What's that?
I need to clarify my names and stuff.
Okay, we can, we can help you with that, sir.
I have Vince Dugan, V-U-G-G-A-N.
One G.
One G. Dwight, what was the last name?
Here, I'll show you right here.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Kirk. Jim Hawkes. J. Patrick Keenan. Kimberly Steger. I figured there'd be...
I thought that we would have a stalemate on the last three.
Me too.
Vince.
Yeah.
Dwight. And Kirk. What's Dwight's last name? Dwight Porter. And two years was Jim Hawkes, J. Patrick Keenan, Kimberly Steger. Honestly, I did not expect all nine to be selected today. I figured there'd be...
I thought that we would have a stalemate on the last three.
Me too.
Vince.
Yeah.
Dwight. And Kirk. What's Dwight's last name? Dwight Porter. And two years was Jim Hawkes, J. Patrick Keenan, Kimberly Steger. Honestly, I did not expect all nine to be selected today. I figured there'd be...
I thought that we would have a stalemate on the last three.
Me too.
Vince.
No.
Those are really super sticky. I tried removing one to put it in a different location and it wasn't gonna happen.
We probably should schedule a meeting and it's gonna end up needing to be published. Yes, Trish.
So the question now is, I mean, each of these individuals has sort of a short bio, paragraph, affiliation or something that... How would I get something like that just to include? Well, for example, Michael Steele, he is, you know, head of Steel Construction, whatever, just some short...
Michael Steele is not head of Steel Construction.
Okay, that's just an example.
Michael Steele is Vice President of Administration of the Community College. So, but I can get you a quick, brief...
In the box.
Some summation of their skillset, why they were selected, or at least what they considered.
Becky, I need to go back and read your email. I read it kind of quick about the... Sounds complicated.
Yes, I guess so. Okay. Perfect.
I guess that's why we do it this way.
Can absolutely be that. Yep.
You're welcome, Creosote. I want you to be involved in helping with that. You're welcome. Oh, I did read it.
Doesn't...I've read it. Firstly, I didn't have any problems.
Especially for us.
He didn't throw anything.
What kind of feedback are you giving from neighboring counties? Are they having the same challenges?
I would just be contacted to schedule the initial...
Oh, I know. Samantha was sharing some frustrations.
Right.
That would be...
And they're not responding to the inquiries at all, not even via email. I can't imagine how frustrated you guys are over there.
Tyler, is it out of bounds to ask you for the initial meeting to be there to advise on what I need to do next?
You have a lot of hurdles.
Is that out of bounds?
If you can't think of something for these guys to talk about in the morning, if you forgot what we mentioned earlier...
Because they're gonna...some of them are gonna know. Well, maybe none of them will know.
They'll probably come up with something to talk about.
We can send over some notes. Chris probably not select. He's ignoring us.
It's okay.
We're just told Tristan that we'd send over some notes in case you're lacking material for the radio show tomorrow.
Commissioner Bruns, would you share those notes with me that you have for George as well?
Sure.
Okay. And Brian needs to share with Commissioner Woodruff the news I shared with you last week when we were on a fellow meeting.
Oh, yeah.
On Friday.
Yeah.
After...
What was that date?
This Wednesday.
That's what I thought.
He'll provide that to you after you redact everything.
Yes, yeah, after redacting.
Means redacted.
Yep. Well, thank you, commissioners.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tristan.
Let's see, we're just about done with...
I think we're done with them over here. We still have some here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All these have three?
We skipped you with the slim stack of them.
I appreciate that. Appreciate all of you. Becky, do you have anything else for us?
Two things. Hey, Larry Fletcher from Overby, Wallace, about Fairview Cemetery.
No, not recently.
Okay. He said that the county had mowed the cemetery at least for the last two prior years. And he said that this year, when they went on Memorial Day, the weeds were like waist-high and he wanted to know when the county was gonna come mow it again. They don't have a tax levy...it's Fairview Cemetery. They do not have a tax levy. I didn't know...
Do we know, in fact, was that one that the county, for our one mowing a year, actually did hire somebody? Or was that one that the Edwards family did on their own? First thing we need to find out.
Yeah, he did not know. He kept insisting...I talked to him once and he said it was the county that mowed it. That's what he says. I told him I have no record of agreement.
We have in our minutes the one or two cemeteries. I think that the county did agree to hire somebody to mow it one time a year as was required. As a courtesy, we've tried to catch it prior to... Was it Memorial Day or whatever they put on the flowers?
Other than that...
So do we...we don't know if this is one that we have a contract... Is there a contract?
I do not see anything written. There's nothing written. There's not a written contract. I don't know if this is under that abandoned cemetery statute to...
Would you like me to inquire at the road department to see if we can get some historical information from employees?
Well, they could have...I mean, that was their quote. Because I thought about calling Jason, but I didn't because I'm like, well, he would've been here for one thing.
Right.
And I'm like, they could've maybe mowed the entryway, but I mean, in between the markers and that. I don't know how big the cemetery...I mean, I don't know it. I don't own the cemetery.
I don't know the cemetery either, but I can't imagine any of the county equipment would fit in...
We don't even use county equipment for that.
We hire somebody, I see.
Okay, would you wanna send that down to Wallace? Would you wanna check on that?
Yes. I can. If you can give me his contact.
I told him I could not find any written contract.
Okay. I'll look into it.
The other thing I need to remind you about is your open enrollment stuff. Thank you. It's due tomorrow.
Oh, jeez.
Even if you don't do anything...
I have an appointment in five minutes.
...about the social 125 plan. If you don't take it, you gotta wave it aside.
Oh, I better go down and do it. Can I do it here?
Yes.
Okay. I'll do it right now.
I'll be down also.
Okay, whoever runs fastest gets...
You all need...she had a copy of your last...
She caught me at the door this morning and said I needed to get that.
It's a footrace between you and your job.
Anything else, Becky?
No.
Tammy? Tyler? So at 11:19, I will adjourn this meeting. Major Taylor.
Go for it. I had a big chunk of time carved out today. I thought we'd still be here at 12:30.
She's got something for the road department. Few minutes.
That went a lot faster than what I was thinking.
Yeah. I'm glad we put it on the last agenda item so we had that leeway if we needed it. So you are gonna construct a letter to both sets of...
Tammy's gonna construct a letter. Congratulatory as well as a thank you.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. We hope that you will want to stay in a pool for the future...
I'm just talking to him.
Selection.
I'm not talking to him.
I'm leaving. He has a...
So am I.
We will behave. I promise you.
Okay, you'll kinda hit that. Okay, good.
I'm also gonna make some phone calls before this hits the press, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Do you imagine most interested parties probably watched our meeting anyway? Don't you think?
I would be surprised if this is not one of the most viewed meetings that we've had.
Yeah.
Are we shut off?
Yes.
Good.
Can you hit the X?